This conference will now be recorded.
All right, it's all yours, Lenny.
Okay, great, thank you, Brian. Good morning, everybody. I think it's still morning in my world. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to convene this meeting at, what is, what time is it? 11:35 on April 6, 2021. This is a pretty exciting meeting. So we're going to, we're going to dive a little deeper and get more details on our second Green Liberty Bond issuance. And as board members who were around when we issued the first, that was a proof of concept issuance, really. We weren't quite sure, and they were snapped up immediately. And so it's very exciting to be going back out into the market with a, with a larger issuance. I want to make sure, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Garcia, but I want to make sure that we recognized we had on, on this call, our bond counsel from Shipman and Goodwin, Bruce Chudwick, and another attorney whose name is Matt Ritter. That sounds kind of familiar. And, and we also have Bob Lamb, who is our Connecticut Green Bank Financial Advisor from Lamont Financial. So I will now turn it over to Brian Garcia. Brian?
Excellent, all right. Good morning, everyone. We are excited to be bringing you our second Green Liberty Bond of 2021. This is a really, a big group effort. It really takes a village to pull these types of transactions together. And I'm going to turn this over to Burt Hunter in just a second. But if you are out and looking to promote the Green Liberty Bonds, always just send folks to greenlibertybonds.com. That will bring people to our webpage where they can interact with our bond underwriters, Stiefel and Ramirez, and hopefully place orders for bonds if they're interested. We put together the website, a team did a great job. And this is actually an image here of a street in Bridgeport, where we are deploying very actively solar PV on in low-income houses, houses across the neighborhoods of Bridgeport. So we're excited again to bringing you the Green Liberty Bonds 2021. And let me turn this over to Burt Hunter and the team. Burt?
Okay, thanks, thanks, Brian. And as, as Brian mentioned, this, oops, hang on. You just dwell on that page for a moment. This is the bond link site, greenlibertybonds.com. And that brings up all the information people would need. That page will change. Currently, you see there in the lower right-hand corner, it refers to the bonds we issued last year, the Series 2020 Bonds. But as of, if everything goes according to plan, fingers crossed, on April 9, we will upload the new information related to the Series 2021 Bonds, and everything will be refreshed. And you'll still be able to get the Series 2020 Bonds information, but, but everything will be up there, including credit rating agency, bond rating agency information, so from S&amp;P and so forth. So all very exciting. We had a lot of traffic on this website last year. And we, it's very user-friendly. So you should, you should check that website out yourselves just to make sure that it is user-friendly. If there are any issues, please let us know. We like to improve things as we move along. Next slide, please. So as Chair Reed mentioned, this is pretty much the same as last year, where we had our first Green Liberty Bond, which was very successful. We are very capably led in this effort by Lamont Financial, Bob Lamb. Really, you know, everyone knows Bob in this industry. And, you know, when you say he's been around for decades, it makes him seem like he's, I don't know, Methuselah or something like that. Apologies, Bob. But you, but really is just one of the icons in the municipal space, and the bond space generally. So thanks, Bob, for your very capable leadership of us in this endeavor. And we have bond counsel from Shipman and Goodwin. Bruce Chudwick and Matt Ritter are with us today. And our underwriter, lead underwriter is Stiefel and Company. They've flipped places with Ramirez. And since they have flipped places, there's a new underwriters council, which is the firm of Ballard Spar. In terms of trustee, we did an RFP to confirm the trustee position. And Bank of New York Mellon won the rights to take that through the RFP process. And we confirmed them. They will be continuing on as our trustee. And DNV GL also is continuing on as our independent engineer. They're very steeped in this activity with several securitization, more than a billion dollars worth of, a billion dollars' worth of securitizations to their name. And so, and also, we have, since this is a green bond, we have climate bond verifier in Kestrel Verifiers. And Eric actually will walk us through that on the next slide. So Eric, over to you.
Thanks, Bert. This is going to be a CBI-certified climate bond. We're certifying it as such using our green bond framework and our programmatic certification that was implemented last year. We partnered with Kestrel to help us develop that green bond framework, which really says this is what our intentions are. And here's how we're going to go about and think about the transparency and the use of funds for all of our bonds. We then worked with them and approached climate bonds initiative for them to certify our bonding and with specific use around solar. So we now can issue bonds, and as long as our solar, or the use of the proceeds is for solar, we can go ahead and certify that bond as compliant. Kestrel will do post-issuance reporting as they do for our other bonds. So in terms of, just notice in the marketplace that we've achieved in terms of last year's bond, we won awards from both Bond Buyer Deal of the Year, which is really like the Oscars of the municipal bond market, I'm told. And we, in terms of Deal of the Year for Innovation. And then we were cited by Environmental Finance in their bond awards. So I guess that's like the Screen Actors Guild of Bond Awards. So it was, it was great to be recognized by both of those for taking an old concept and reusing that for a new purpose here. And we look to continue to innovate as we go forward.
Thanks, Eric. Mike, well, Mike, you will be reviewing the structure of Green Liberty Bond that we will be issuing later in, in April in detail. But at a high level, I wanted to just review these details with the high-level details with you at this time. And I would just like to say, I know we have some new directors with us. And so some of this will be new to you. Just stop us at any time. We're going to be, we'll be moving through the presentation, but Mike will be taking pit stops along the way to make sure everyone is, is okay with the concepts here. So at a, at a high level, the Green Bank, through its residential solar investment program, which has been around for, you know, more than a decade, offers incentives to homeowners. In exchange for those incentives, the Green Bank gets back all of the environmental attributes. In this particular case, Class 1 Renewable Energy Credits, which are known as Solar Home Renewable Energy Credits, or ShRECs. And each, each ShREC is equal to 1 megawatt hour of production. And that's important because under a master purchase agreement, this is all by statute, under master purchase agreements that have been entered into between the Green Bank and the two investor-owned utilities, EverSource and United Illuminating, the Green Bank aggregates these, these ShRECs into tranches. And the utilities have agreed to purchase those from us over a 15-year tranche lifetime. That's at the price of $47 per ShREC, which amounts to nearly $37 million over the life of the bonds, representing production and revenues over about 7,000 residential rooftop systems. And, and that persists from January of this year until the end of 2035. That's, the fact that these revenues or collections are paid from investment-grade utilities means the bonds are very strong in their likelihood of repayment. The last issuance was supported, as is this one, by a Special Capital Reserve Fund. The Green Bank will establish a debt service reserve fund funded at maximum annual debt service, or MADS, to support the bond. And on the basis of that support, as well as the investment-grade payment from the utilities, the bond's received in a rating of A the last, last year. And we expect a, a similar rating for, for this, this issuance. So the board will have to confirm the self-sufficiency findings that Mike, you will be presenting to you during the course of this presentation. And you will do that in the resolutions that, that you, your directors will vote on at the end of the meeting. Next slide, please. Here is the Residential Solar Investment Program, ARCEP Portfolio Composition. This has been an ongoing program that will stretch for 350. And now there's, the board approved for an extra portion of about 30 megawatts, I believe, to take us to about 380 or so megawatts of installed capacity. So you'll see that between, before the ShREC program started, which is on the first row, about $50 million worth of ARCEP incentives to be conferred on, on those projects, or that have been conferred. And we recover via contracts in the marketplace with various counterparties, who are able to monetize those incentives and offset the cost of the program. With this, with the ShREC program, we are now able to do that more formally, as I mentioned, through the master purchase agreements. And you see in the column that it's entitled ShREC price, the price that we are yielding for the various tranches. Tranche 1 and 2, we securitize by issuing bonds in the ABS or Asset-Based Securities Market, approximately a $40 million bond. It was purchased by an insurance company that was in 2019, which is, Eric pointed out, yielded us two, two awards of recognition. And then tranche 3, which was our first Green Liberty Bond, we issued about a $17 million in bonds on a serial basis, meaning year by year by year, out to year 10, and then a term bond for years 11 through 15. And then, then you will see, again, here, you'll see again here that in tranche 4, we've got the Green Liberty Bond number 2, which we estimate currently at about $23 million of issuance. And then there'll be some follow-on ShRECs for which we will issue further Green Liberty Bonds. So I'll hand this over now to, to Mike to walk you through the ShREC process and, and everything on the next slide.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, are you there? You're, you're on mute a few.
All right. Sorry, can, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear. Great, thank you.
All right, great, thanks, Bert. And so I'm going to be covering a lot of material here. And so if anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask, because it is, it can get quite complicated. So there's a lot going on this slide in particular. If, and if there's only one takeaway from this that you, that I can impart, is that the ARCEP team does a staggering amount of work to get a ShREC, to get a ShREC generated. We try to lay out all the processes that go into creating a ShREC and to have it be a bankable source of revenue for the bonds. So in the green box up in the corner, you have key ARCEP responsibilities. And so these are the actions taken by Sergio and Selia and the ARCEP team to ensure high-quality ShREC creation. The first hurdle that they, that we have there is that you have to have qualified contractors building the underlying solar systems. And to that end, there's qualification requirements and project inspections necessary for a system to be accepted into the program. And this includes looking at electrical diagrams, shade reports, and site plans. And then after the system is solved, all the systems have to be, they have to pass municipal inspections with local officials and also receive a utility approval to energize. The ARCEP team also handles the incentive payments, which is the EPBs, which is upfront payments to homeowners, and to, and PBIs, which is ongoing payments to third-party owners over the course of six years. And all the systems have revenue grade meters in place that report back to us at 15-minute intervals. So we have pretty good insight into the system performance. And, and then finally, ARCEP handles all the regulatory approvals, which is the dotted red line coming from PURA, where they submit the system information and documentation to prove that it qualifies as, as was called a Class 1 ShREC, which is a requirement for creating ShRECs. And then finally, the, the team takes care of the ShREC minting process with NEEPOL GIS. And so every quarter, they'll, they'll aggregate what the portfolio has generated and send that to NEEPOL GIS to have them actually mint the ShRECs. And then they'll invoice the utilities, which is done under the master purchase agreements. On the next slide, we dive a little bit deeper into the NPAs. And so Bert covered it a little earlier, but the key attributes here are that the NPAs have been approved, have been approved by PURA and allow the utilities 100% cost recovery. So it's a relatively frictionless structure where the utilities are able to pass their costs on and, and help meet their renewable portfolio standard requirements. EverSource purchases 80% of the ShRECs, and UI purchases the other 20%, regardless of where or whose grid the systems are physically connected to. And in terms of timing of the energy, energy generation to revenue realization, we close a quarter and then send that period's generation to NEEPOL GIS for them to confirm and generate the ShRECs. And this takes about three months. And then we'll invoice utilities and give them a month, a month and a half to pay. So also, there's about a five-month lag from quarter end to actually getting the revenue in, in a bank account. And since the first quarterly payments or revenues began in 2017, we haven't really had any issues with utilities acknowledging the receipt of the ShRECs and their payment obligations, although there have been, you know, some hiccups with, with utilities misdirecting payments or trying to get their payment system set up. But, but we're, we're solving those. So this program is, is full, as Bert mentioned, at the authorized 350 megawatts, barring, barring some expansions. So we hope that that continues so we can keep on, keep the program going through at least the, the end of the year. On that, yes, on this slide, this shows sort of the key, the key areas that you can sort of break the structure up into. The great area is the creation and revenue generation from the ShRECs themselves. So up at the top, you have the system owners, whether it's the homeowner who owns the system or a third party who owns it, say Tesla or Sunrun. And then they, they go and lease it or use it under a PPA, you know, sell energy to the homeowner. And so it's, it's these two groups that generate the clean energy. And who's a, and that generation turns into a renewable energy credit that we take and monetize with the utilities under the NPAs. The utilities will then remit payment to a trustee-controlled bank account. So in this case, it'll be Bank of New York. And then the trustee will send the funds through a laid-out waterfall to pay no holders, to pay trustee fees, and, and any residuals that might come to, you know, the Green Bank at the, at the end. And this should be 99% of, and all, all anyone has to worry about. That's, this is how our ABS is set up, and it's gone smoothly for, for nine payment cycles now. Our Green Liberty Bonds also have, have come in, you know, well above where the debt service is. And so we've been getting residuals from that, too. And there's been no need for any, any sort of step credit enhancement or intervention yet. But as added protection for the transaction, we, we like to have the state, the state's scarf credit enhancement. So that means the state will step in if the Green Bank is unable to cure any deficiency under a project support agreement and undertaking. I'll pause for a moment to see if anyone has, has questions on what I've covered so far. Okay, hearing none. On, on the next slide, this lays out more in depth on the, the timing of ShREC creation and revenue receipt, which I touched upon earlier. Again, there's a, you'll see that there's a five-month lag between the end of the quarter and revenues received. This, this is because, you know, we have to scrub the data, send it to NEEPOL GIS, who then confirms that it, everything looks good and actually creates the ShRECs for us. But the, this, this timing lag is taken into account in terms of the bond payments and debt service. So, you know, if we have interest payments due on November 15, we know that we're already taking into account the five-month lag for, expected lag for the revenue generation. Great, on the next slide, here we go into the preliminary structure of this second issuance of Green Liberty Bonds. And so, and this, this is, this, this, the structure will change depending on what the market interest rates are at launch. But it will be sized to a debt service coverage ratio. Right now, we're using a P90 production forecast. So what that means is 90 out of 100 times, we expect to meet or beat that, that energy forecast in any given year. And so we think it's a relatively conservative way of looking at the, the ShREC generation of the 7,000 system portfolio. It'll be comprised of both serial bonds and a term bond. So those serial bonds go out to 10 years. So you can pick and choose a maturity that you like, and each one will have its own associated interest rate. And then there'll be a 15-year term bond that sort of soaks up the, the rest of the cash flow to the, to maturity. Interest will be payable semi-annually on May 15 and November 15. And principal is, is due on November 15. And this will be at a $1,000 denomination. We are, we are exploring avenues to lower that. But right, right now, we're going to stick to the $1,000 minimum, which is the, the lowest that you can go per DTC guidelines. And as Eric mentioned earlier, this is, this will be a climate-certified bond. So on this next slide here, we have the, the sort of, which shows the flow of funds of the Green Liberty Bonds. In the, and you can, you can look in the, the offering statement for a complete description. So this is just a snapshot of it. But on a, on a quarterly basis, we'll receive the revenues from utilities, as I discussed earlier, and that'll get deposited in the revenue fund. From there, the trustee looks at what it's, what, what fees are owed to itself and any other parties that might come ahead of debt service and pay that out, as well as send money into the interest account and principal account to make sure that there's enough to, to meet those obligations when they, when they come due. If, if necessary, the trustee will send money into the, the Special Capital Reserve Fund to, to make sure it's equal to whatever the remaining maximum annual debt service payment is. This, this account will be funded to close at MADS. So unless it's used and not, and needs to be replenished, then there shouldn't be any funds sent there. But if necessary, it will be, it will be replenished by the trustee or, or the Green Bank. So the, the Green Bank can also step in and replenish this fund if the state does not. And then finally, the, the trustee will apply any, apply any funds if necessary for, for bond redemptions. And then if there's any leftover, it'll go to effectively a residual account that can get transferred back to the Green Bank. Is there any, any questions on this flow of funds or comments? Okay, great. So on to the self-sufficiency findings. So really, what we want to, what we set out to prove is that the, the revenues associated with the bonds are very secure and are able to pay all the debt service on the bonds and any expenses needed to sort of service those bonds, like pay the trustee fees and maintain reserves and keep, and keep the projects in, in good working order. And so that's on, what you see on the next slide, the self-sufficiency, the self-sufficiency findings. We have a series of five. So that, that first finding is sort of a catch-all to say that, okay, yeah, we looked at the revenues, looked at what the starting cash reserves are, and we found that they are more than sufficient to pay the debt service and expenses on the bonds. And so the, the next four findings sort of walk through why we can make that claim. And so we, we know what the debt service and expenses are because we have, you know, that's, that'll be laid out in the schedule per the offering statement. And we know the expenses are for the trustee, as well as, as well as the starting reserves. So really, the primary focus will be on revenue here, which we look at from a number of different angles. So on finding number two, we looked at what's the security of payment from the off-takers, from EverSource and UI. And we find that the utilities have a strong obligation, a statutory obligation to purchase the ShRECs from us. We haven't executed contract with them for 15 years. And it's, it's at fixed price, so there's zero, there's, there's zero price, pricing risk in there. And the utilities are able to use the ShRECs to satisfy their RPS requirements. Moreover, they're allowed full cost recovery. So there's, there's really no pushback from the utilities at, at this arrangement. And both off-takers are rated entities. So you see the ratings are from, from S&amp;P and Moody's. And so all these things sort of wrap together, that are investment-grade, it's a fixed-price contract. It's been, the, the NPAs have been approved by PURA already, and there's, there's no need for any further regulatory review. You know, those sort of make it a rock, you know, we think a pretty rock-solid obligation from the utilities and a willingness to pay from the utilities. Going on to finding number three, you know, we look at, what, what does it take to keep a portfolio of solar systems running well and producing what we think they're going to produce? And here, we look at, and that's, that's when we turn the, to the production side of the equation. Of course, it's in our interests and in the interests of the, the owner of the panels to produce a lot of energy, so they, they save on their own utility costs, and we get ShRECs in return. Here, the system owner has responsibility to maintain and repair the systems and panels. And there's a strong economic incentive for them to keep the system running optimally. Otherwise, they're going to just pay more out of pocket for electricity from the utilities than they would otherwise.
Mike, while you're explaining, if I could ask?
Which is 75 to 80% of the, the portfolio. They will also lose out on incentive payments, which is tied to performance. So if they're neglecting maintenance and production drops, they're going to get less from the Green Bank as a result.
Mike, it's morning.
We actually have slightly lower ARCEP expenses as a, as a result.
Mike, can you hear me?
Mike, just?
We also have insight into system performance, which, and then we can, you know, because we have that insight, we can take steps to notify owners if there's an issue. Or, you know, if it's a chronic problem, like workmanship issues from specific, specific contractors, we've actually in the past had, you know, removed contractors from the program because of, because of that. There are warranties in place to cover most, if not all, major system issues through the, the term of the ShREC.
Mike, I think you're trying to get some questions.
And you look at all these sort of overlapping incentives and warranties and protections in place. Out of the 40, almost 41,000 ARCEP systems that have been completed in the last nine years, there's been an incredibly low loss rate. And the, you know, less than 150 systems have been taken out of operation since that time, which is, is a testament to the sadness of how these things perform.
Hey, Mike? Okay. Is, is it Bert Hunter?
Mike, can you hear it?
I'll park right there in case there's any questions.
All right, we've got questions. Who wanted to start? Bert Hunter, were you trying to get in?
Yes, I was just saying, uh, that if we could go to slide, uh, 22, uh, that will, will explain the production risk part of this, that Mike is kind of walking through. Uh, but, um, but we can, the question, there might be some questions before, uh, energy production. Uh, Mike, can you hear us now?
Yeah, sorry, I just realized I had my speaker muted to, to not have feedbacks. I wasn't hearing anyone before.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll have to figure out a way around that because we, we had some questions. Okay, anyway. So back to you, Madam Chair, to field any questions.
Yes, so, um, I, I thought I heard people trying to ask questions. Anybody? Anybody want to do some follow-up asking?
Ma- Madam Chair, it's Matt.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, how are you? Just a quick question on the, there's a note in finding three about insurance coverage. Is that, uh, are we getting performance insurance? Do we have general risk insurance? And what insurance do we have? And, uh, well, that's the question.
There's, um, there's, there's a, there's sort of a, a layers of insurance here. So typically the, the systems are covered by, by homeowner insurance or liability insurance by the TPOs. For, for the Green Bank, um, for the ABS and the, and the Green Liberty Bonds, we went and obtained parametric insurance, which is the, the, to protect us against sort of, um, long tail risk. And so for that, we, it was primarily focused on storm insurance. So we wanted to make sure, um, you know, if there's a big event that knocked out a lot of systems, we, you know, that wouldn't, that wouldn't have our ability to, to, uh, pay our bonds. And so, you know, that insurance covers, yeah, it, you know, it's based on wind speeds and duration and, and categorization by, um, NOAA. And, and so it's a, it's a, it's a pretty small slice of, of risk, but it covers a, a big, um, potential loss to us. But that's on top of the, the other insurance already obtained by the homeowner or the third party owner.
But, uh, Mike, does the parametric insurance, does that cover the lost revenue or just the damage to the equipment?
It's a revenue payout. Uh, it's a revenue payout policy. So, um, uh, but it's based, but it is based on, uh, actual loss. Uh, there are a couple of ways, those, a couple of ways those policies are written. Um, we had a choice between, um, basically winning the lottery, uh, whether or not the systems were damaged. Uh, and that policy is much more expensive because if there's a storm and you, and you hit the, the wind speed number, the insurance would pay you regardless of your, the damage to your system. Uh, the insurance we got is based on, uh, actual, actual loss of production. So it's, it's, uh, econo- more economical, uh, to acquire and, uh, but all we wanted to do was to cover our losses and not win a lottery because of speed. So, uh, that's, that's the route we, we went with. And that covers all three bond, that will cover all three bonds. We, we had, uh, this parametric, it's called parametric insurance. Uh, we had that cover in for the ABS bond. Uh, we at our, that was required by the buyer of the bond. For our second bond, we thought it was, it was such a good idea. We said, well, why don't we cover the, the next bond as well, just to, uh, cover that risk? And we did that, and we're in the market right now to cover, um, cover the third issuance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bert, it's Lonnie. Just quickly, remind me, so we had had some interest from, um, investors about the longer term bonds, uh, 10 plus years. What percentage of this, of this issuance is going to follow into that longer term category?
If we go back to slide 16, nope, there we go. Yeah. So roughly 25%, uh, a little bit more than 25% of the bond will be in the term bond, $6 million worth. So, um, the way that works is that investors can collect the term, term bond. But in, in terms of, um, actual repayment, it can happen in the 11th year, the 12th year, 13th year, 14th year, or 15th year. The bonds that will be retired are picked randomly by the trustee, uh, and, uh, in a random sequence. And so, you know, some of your bonds, you buy more than one, $1,000 bond, uh, you may or may not, um, have your bond redeemed in the 11th year. If not, you'll get redeemed in the 12th, 13th, 14th, or 15th year. It just happens that way.
Okay, and then one, one other quick question. So the other questions I kept being asked were, can, can non-Connecticut residents get in on this? And I think it was established that they could the last time, too, but they went so quickly. Connecticut residents have first dibs?
Co- correct. We're going to be working on that with, uh, with the underwriter to determine, you know, how much of, of the bond we set aside for Connecticut residents because, uh, we had a lot of, uh, interest outside of Connecticut that were, they were blocked out. So for instance, we might say on, on day one, 50, up to 50% of any, uh, bond is, is secure for, um, Connecticut residents. And the other 50% we would hold for, uh, say, outside of the state of Connecticut. For instance, we haven't made any hard, fast decisions yet, but we would like to satisfy that demand outside of, of Connecticut and not frustrate investors who are really trying to, uh, to put their money in the state of Connecticut.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions?
Okay, Mike, keep in mind that, uh, for that, uh, the one, we're going to have to move along here, but the, the finding number four for the independent engineer, um, let's, uh, if Brian Garcia or whoever's covering the slides, maybe move to slide 23, uh, through 26, as you're kind of talking about, uh, the production and stuff. Okay?
Sure. Thanks, Bert. Yeah, thanks. So for this tranche, as with all the previous tranches, we retain DMV GL, who's internationally respected and, and, um, recognized independent engineer to, to look at the portfolio, look at the equipment, the, the manufacturers, um, historical performance, and sort of wrap all that in and create their, what they think is, uh, the, the best guess at the production forecasts. Uh, and, and based on their findings, they provided us a, both a, a look at the, the P50, the P90, and the P99. So the P50 is sort of what we think is, on average, what's going to happen. 50% of the time, we're going to beat that. 50% of the time, we're, we're not going to beat that. But over 15 years, that's, it's probably going to get close to what that, you know, those numbers. Uh, P90 is more conservative, where 90% of the time, we're going to beat that. And then P99 is the most conservative, where 99% of the time, you know, we should be able to beat that number in any, any given year. So it gets, um, here on this slide, you can see that, um, the, the, the total megawatt generated across, from P50 to P99, it, it drops because the, it gets an, it's an easier hurdle to pass every, you know, in a given year. They also looked at, um, the, the sample design for 20 systems and visited in person 15 systems and make sure the actual construction and workmanship was, was, um, acceptable. They found some minor issues here, but very typical of, especially residential solar systems in terms of improper labeling and, and some, some wires were loose, but, you know, all, all very low risk type, uh, type flags. And using their numbers, you know, we, we use that as the baseline for our, our forecast, which feeds into the debt service and, uh, you know, what the cash flows we think will look like in the next 15 years. And so if you looked at that, you know, if you, if you take that methodology and look at it for the previous tranches, what happened if we take the P90 numbers for tranche one and two and, and the Green Liberty Bonds last year and look at how they performed? This, this slide shows, you know, how we're doing on an overall basis. And it's, it's quite good, I think, in terms of, um, where we are in, for, for tranche one and two, we're at about 99% of performance on a P90 basis. And for tranche three, we're at 100 and almost 7% of, of cumulative performance. And, um, I think, you know, the main reason why there's a, the divergence in, you know, almost a seven point percentage point difference between these two is that tranche one and two is comprised of, uh, slightly older systems. And, um, when we, when we sized that one, we didn't necessarily think to account the overall availability. And so what that means is, you know, in any given period, you know, there might be 3% or 4% of the systems that are, are not reading well, or the data's corrupted, um, or there's sort of, you know, maybe, maybe this house had power spikes or power outages that made the meter reset. And so when that happens, the data, you know, we, we can't, we have, we sometimes can't use that data to mint a Shrek with. And, and so we lose out on that a little bit. And so, um, for, for tranche three, we took that into account and took like a, a 5% haircut on it, where tranche one and two, we didn't necessarily do that. And so that's why there's a bit of a divergence in terms of the overall performance. Um, for this tranche, we are, again, taking that haircut, that availability, availability haircut. And so we, you know, I, I would expect to be able to meet or beat, um, the P90s in, in most of the years. And I would add that, um, especially for the, the ABS deal, the tranche one and two, Kroll recently, just last week reaffirmed their rating on it. So it's still investment grade, and they looked at the performance and said that's still on track and meeting their, uh, their expectations. So this slide is a, a deeper dive into the structure. I, I talked earlier about sizing it to a 1.15 times debt service coverage based on P90 numbers. But in terms of self-sufficiency, we also looked at what would happen if you look at P99 in projections? And even under that scenario, um, the debt service coverage is greater than one, um, when you take the super conservative look at revenue generation. And so because even at a P99, it's over one, you know, that's what we're saying is this, this structure stands on this, stands on its own. It's, it's self-sufficient, um, even though the sizing of it is, is based on P90 for, for marketing purposes and, and, um, what we, you know, what we're telling investors. But yeah, on the, uh, on the, this, uh, this green table here is effectively a waterfall snapshot. And so starting on the, the left side, you have Shrek revenues, and then you have the payments to debt administrative fees and, and also the trustee. Towards the end there, you also have a, a small release of cash from the reserves because the, the cash is, the reserves are sized to the maximum annual debt service. And as that maximum annual debt service is reduced year over year, we can release a little bit of reserve, a little bit of cash in that reserve to help make, uh, make debt payments. But yeah, even, even with, um, taking into account all the expenses, it's still cash flow positive, and we, we still expect to build cash over the, um, over the, the term of the bonds. And then, yeah, on, on this slide, this shows the sources and uses of the, the funds. And so most of it will go toward recovering RCE incentives or paying future RCE incentives. So you can see here that 8 million's already been paid on the tranche, and that's, that's a lot of the, the EPBBs, um, the upfront payments to homeowners. But also, um, to the extent that third-party systems have been up and running, you know, they, they may have earned a, a year or two of, of PBI payments already as well. And then the remainder of that, 9.7, 7 million, um, that'll be paid out in terms of PBIs over the next, um, probably four to five years. In terms of the financing costs, you'll see here that we have, um, some fees and expenses associated with a warehouse facility that we have with a couple of local banks that we use to, um, help provide liquidity for overall, uh, general Green Bank purposes, um, using the tranche as collateral. And then we, we're taking, we took that collateral out of that warehouse and are using it now for the Green Liberty Bonds. Um, and then also there's the cost of issuance in terms of legal fees, um, consulting fees, and also as, as, as well as the underwriter, underwriter discount. So overall, the total financing cost comes out to about 8.26, uh, 800.6 thousand. And then finally, there's administrative expenses. Um, this, this is stuff like overhead costs, uh, allocation of salaries, uh, technology and, and portfolio monitoring costs that, uh, are all, all bundled into this. This number is effectively a, a bridge between all these other, uh, concrete costs and the, uh, and the, uh, the total source of funds. And so it's a, it's effectively is a, is a plug, um, even though our expenses are really in effect a lot more than this 2.4 million, when you look at the totality of what goes into, uh, helping to get these, uh, these tranches up and running. Okay. Here, uh, I think I'll, I, am I turning it back over to Berters?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mike. So here, here's where we stand, uh, as of today. We've, uh, this is the process that has to be covered. I think I reviewed this with the, uh, the board at the last board meeting. But, uh, we have finished with the, uh, the Connecticut State Disclosure Update. That is required because, uh, since this is state-supported with the Special Capital Reserve Fund, uh, investors will be relying on, uh, the strength of the state. So the state has to provide, uh, all the disclosures that it would normally issue in a, in a geo bond offering. We presented our self-sufficiency findings to the Office of the Treasurer, as well as OPM. Under statute, they both have to approve. Uh, they have conditionally approved, uh, pending the outcome of this Board of Directors meeting. Uh, they cannot issue, uh, the certificate of the scarf, uh, until the Board of Directors approves the self-sufficiency findings that, uh, Mike just walked you through. That will enable everything to happen from there. Uh, the, the, um, rating by S and P, which we expect to receive tomorrow, uh, the posting of the official statement, the preliminary official statement, an investor presentation, uh, on the ninth, and then, uh, the retail order period on the 21st, and the pricing and institutional offering on, uh, April 22nd, Earth Day. The closing, the actual closing of the bonds would take place in, uh, the first part of May, and, uh, and that will complete the issuance process. Uh, any questions before we go to the resolution? Okay, next slide, please. And I will turn it over to, uh, Brian Farnin, who can introduce Bond Counsel to go through the resolution.
Sure. Thanks, Bert. And, um, I always get a chuckle when I look at these resolutions. There, there, there's so much more involved than the ones that I typically draft up for the board. But, uh, Bruce Childwick and Matt Ritter have been great throughout. Truly are experts in the public finance space and bond issuances. So, um, if you want to give a quick, uh, one or two, uh, kind of high-level overview, Bruce, that would be greatly appreciated.
No, we can't hear you, Bruce. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got you now.
Yes, uh, good, yes, this is Bruce Childwick and Chipman, a good one. And, uh, we've had the pleasure, Matt Ritter and I have, uh, working with the Green Bank on this transaction as we did last year. Um, our role is to put together the, uh, this nice long resolution that Brian Farnin just mentioned. Uh, this puts all, pulls it all together and brings the, uh, the authorization into place and also approves the findings of self-sufficiency that Mike just covered very nicely. So, uh, this resolution is pretty much the same as last year's resolution, uh, with a couple of minor differences which we can talk about. But I'll just go through each resolved clause, you know, quickly. The first, uh, resolved clause, uh, authorizes the bonds to be issued in the maximum amount of $26 million to fund this tranche of Shreks. Uh, it'll be 20-year bonds, as we discussed, uh, maximum 20-year bonds. And, um, uh, this authorized the President and the other officer of the Green Bank to take action to, uh, to sign a purchase contract for selling the bonds. These are, second resolved clause, it's the special obligation to the Green Bank, uh, pledged by, or secured by the revenues from the Shreks. Uh, they're not, uh, secured by full faith and credit taxing power of the state or any political subdivision or the Green Bank. The revenues are what secures the debt service. Third resolved clause is the, is the important one, where you are approving the findings of self-sufficiency in the report. This is what is required in order for OPM and OTT to sign off and give us the certificate that the state is going to, um, back the Special Capital Reserve Fund. Next resolved clause. Next resolved clause is what we did last year with the project support commitment and undertaking. This is a requirement of OTT and OPM that basically says that if, for some reason, there's a shortage, shortage in the debt service fund, and Green Bank will fund that up so that the, the likelihood of ever touching the Special Capital Reserve Funds is greatly mitigated. Next resolved clause is your authorization to engage the Bank of New York Mellon as the trustee. They were trustee in the last year bond, last year bond issue as well. Next resolved clause is unfortunately, there's no provision in the Internal Revenue Code at this point in time for doing these on a tax exempt basis, so they can, they have to be done taxable. They're exempt for Connecticut purposes, but for federal tax purposes, the income is, is taxable to the holders of the bonds. Next resolved clause is that we're gonna be selling the bonds to Stipal Nicholas and Ramirez as the underwriters in accordance with a purchase contract that will get drafted and signed on the date that we price the bonds, April 22nd. Next resolved clause, you're authorizing what's called a preliminary official statement to be dated on or about April 9th. That's the formal offering document that will be made available to investors so they can read about the Green Bank, its operations, and about the Shrek program in much more detail. Next resolved clause is providing for the officers and authorized representatives to, to, to take care of all documentation that needs to be signed for issuing the bonds, a final official statement, signing an indenture of the purchase contract, a continuing disclosure agreement, which is now required in order to sell municipal bonds in the municipal marketplace. And the final two resolved clauses are basically catchall, saying that the prior actions taken by the board or by the Green Bank are hereby ratified, and the officers are authorized to go forward and do everything they need to do to complete the, the bond issuance towards Green Bank. That's it.
Any questions?
Lonnie, this is Matt, just, Matt Rinella, just one quick question. In the first resolved clause, it says the bond issuance should not exceed 26 million. And I think in the presentation, we said based on the P99 projections, the size for P99 would be 23.2. Is that just to give us wiggle room? And if it went to 26, how far, where would that put us, at like P90?
Yeah, yeah, I'm at, that's, you know, we, in general, when these bond issues are done, we usually add in a little bit more room just in case the market moves a little bit. Again, still has to meet the 115 coverage on a P90 basis because that's what the scarf requires. But that's just for a little additional room in case the interest rates do change between now and when we price the bonds on Earth Day.
Okay, so we'd still be above the P90, is what I was, I guess what I was.
Yes, we would still be above P90 because, you know, because the interest rate might, might drop. And so we're paying less interest over that same amount of time.
Got it, thanks.
Any more questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution One, which would move our 2021 Green Liberty Bond issuance forward?
This is Matt, so moved.
Any second?
Second. John Harity.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're good, congratulations. It's approved.
Thank you very much to the entire board.
Thank you. And hearing no other business, does anybody have any other business?
We're, we're not permitted.
Okay, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good work, everybody.
Yeah, it's exciting. Bye bye.